Okay, I will go ahead and start tonight's special meeting. I would like to first start by welcoming all of you in attendance. For the record, it is Tuesday, August 30th at 6:00 PM. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Borton.
Here.
Councilmember Byrd.
Here.
Mayor DeVere.
Here.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I about fell asleep. I move we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All lives wish carried. Item four, under action items. Item 4A is a public hearing on fiscal year 16 amended budget. And I'll turn this over to our CFO.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. And we have the privilege of presenting to you the fiscal year 2016 final budget amendment dollars. And then followed by that, we'll present to you the fiscal year 2017 proposed budget that we have been working on with you guys for the past five months. So what we'll do is we'll start off with the fiscal year 2016 amended budget. The items that we're going to display to you on this particular topic have been presented to you over the last 10 months as budget amendments. This is the formal process that the city must take to make the final budget amount official. So again, a lot of these items that you're going to see here are going to sound familiar. Again, we can answer any questions, but most of these items, all these items have been presented to you in a formal budget amendment process. So like I said, we'll go over the 16 budget amendment, which is going to be a little over $90 million as on the screen. And then after that item is approved by the council, we'll move into the fiscal year 2017 proposed budget as we display to the citizens at $119,231,649. So again, the 16 budget amendment will go over the overall city budget as approved or as proposed. Then we'll go into the general, the three major funds that we report to the citizens, the general fund, the capital improvement fund, and then the enterprise fund. After that presentation, we'll stand for any questions on any items that we presented to you. And then after that, we have a process for the council to make a motion to approve the item for the fiscal year 2016 budget as displayed. And then we'll move on to the fiscal year 2017 budget presentation. So as we noted, the fiscal year 2016 amended budget this year is going to be $90,410,70. The graph here shows that overall, we're down year over year. Again, that is going to be attributed to, you know, carry forward items, personnel items, operating capital items that have all been proposed and presented to you through the fiscal year 2016 for the last 10 months. And you can see how the different functions of the city were affected by the budget amendments that were presented to you during the fiscal year. Sorry about that. So that was the overall city. We report to you and the citizens, three major funds. The first one being the general fund. The general fund this year is up 6.07% to a total of $51,237,040. And you can see the different functions and the impacts of the budget amendments throughout the fiscal year to those individual items themselves, you know, with personnel being up 1.77, capital 8.67, and the carry forward reduced by 26.39. Again, total budget, a little over $51 million for the general fund. Throughout the year, we presented the items for the budget amendments. We had 23 budget amendments this year. And these are some of the major items that we just picked out from the list that were proposed to you throughout the year that you approved at those moments in time. With the fire engine, outside legal services, some software, carry forward, and a transfer to the capital improvement fund were the largest items that we found of the 23 that we thought we'd mention in our presentation. Again, all 23 amendments were presented to you throughout the 10 months leading to the date. Capital improvement fund. This one here, the major change on this one is the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. Right now, we're looking at a revenue increase of $2.6 million. It looks a little funny in a negative bracket, but that's a positive transfer of funds into an expense account. So as you see, the major amendments were the carry forward adjustment and the transfer from the general fund, which were presented throughout the fiscal year. That gets us to our third reporting fund that we report to you and the citizens, and that's known as the enterprise fund. The enterprise fund this year is going to end up at a little over $41,788,000. That's down 14.86%. You can see personnel is down, capital is up a little bit, and the carry forward went down as well. And they had a total of seven major amendments proposed to you and presented to you throughout the fiscal year 2016 with the four items that we pulled of the seven that we thought were major items that we would notate here for your reference. Again, all items were presented during the fiscal year. With that, fiscal year 2016 budget amendment has been presented to you, and we stand for any questions at this time.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. Now with that, there is a process that legal and/or we can help with. It's to actually approve the budget as proposed at $90,410,70. I hand this over to you for that process.
Okay, well, it is a public hearing, and I would first ask if there's any member of the public who would like to provide testimony on this item. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
See, and then I move we close the public hearing on the fiscal year 16 amended budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on item 4A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All lives wish carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move that we approve the fiscal year 16 amended budget in the amount of $90,410,70. And for legal to bring back a ordinance showing that.
Second.
And a second to approve item 4A. Any discussion from counsel? Okay. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
All lives. Item 4B is a public hearing for fiscal year 2017. And I will open the public hearing with our CFO's comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Again, it's our privilege to present to you the fiscal year 2017 proposed budget. This is the budget that we've all been working on together for past four or five months in detail. This is the formal process of the public hearing to announce to the citizens our fiscal year 2017 proposed budget. Today, we'll go over the proposed budget as we left it in July. We'll go over the three major reporting funds, just like we did with the amended budget, general fund, capital improvement fund, enterprise fund. We'll stand for any questions, and then we'll go ahead and follow the process with approving the fiscal year 2017 budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Now, before we get to the final number, I wanted to give an update that we are proposing to reduce the budget as originally intended from July. We're proposing that we go from the $119.9 down to $119.2. This is most, is this is, the difference of $714,000 is due to reporting. Nothing changed from a budgetary discussion that you described or discussed or worked on during July. The two factors of the 714, which is known as the benefits reserve and public safety fund, those are our two items that we all discussed during the July meeting in depth. Unfortunately, we reported those as expenses on the overall city budget, which was inclusive of the $119,946. And at the end of the day, we're actually not going to spend $714,000 in checks. We're not going to be handing out cash. So our notice to the citizens is actually last because we're not asking to spend that money. We're going to save it and invest it. So unfortunately, we reported in error of that $714,000, but the overall budget plan that you proposed to the citizens is still the same. We're just reducing the budget, which is a good thing, and those dollars will still play the same role as you intended in July. We're just cleaning up the paperwork to make the official notice the accurate number that it should be. But at the end of the day, everything you requested and discussed in July is still in place. This just show that, this shows the true spending requests for the city of Meridian for fiscal year 2017. Now, before I move on to this, pass this, I'll stand for any questions on this topic. Again, just cleaning up the dots and making the official notice official. So we apologize about the error, but we thought this was the right thing to do.
Counsel, any questions about this, this item, this change?
Thank you again. We apologize about that. So with that, we'll jump straight into the fiscal year 2017 budget of $119,231,641 as proposed to you. As you can see, this is the overall city budget broken out by major components. Personnel is making, is currently going to make up 34% of the $119 million. Operating is at 15%. Capital, without including carry forward, capital is at 33 million. And you can see the two carry forward items make about 27 million. Those are items that were proposed and approved in prior fiscal years that we need to carry the funds for into the fiscal year 17 so that the project managers and the city departments can complete those projects as approved in prior budgets. So again, here's a kind of history of the city's budget. Far right column is your $119. The first five columns represent the final amended budgets. So that $90 million that we just approved not too long ago is the column to the left for 16, and then 17 represent what we're proposing today. So what we're doing is comparing five years of amended to one year proposed. And the two boxes that we really focus on are the personnel and operating. Those are ongoing, as you heard me state in the previous meetings. Those are ongoing. Those are the dollars that we really need to make sure we cover. So we keep track of those two columns, those two sections pretty closely. Now, we're going to get into the three major funds. The first fund that we're going to report on is the general fund. It's going to be a little over $52 million for fiscal year 2017 as proposed. Again, during our July discussions, we agreed that we would use $256,000 of the fund balance to balance the budget. We would use $319,000 of the impact fee to balance that part of the budget. Those two items that we spoke about earlier, the public safety fund and the benefits, we said we would contribute to those reserves and those balances. Those are notated in the notes as well. Below are just some stats and that support the general fund budget as proposed. The top left graph shows the general fund by the functions of personnel, operating, capital, and the carry forward, just like we did with the overall city budget. And then the graph below shows the general fund broken out by department. As you can see, public safety makes up 55%. Parks is 27. And then admin and community development division, they make up 18% with the respective dollar amounts.
And those percentages include the capital, which tend to skew.
You're 100% correct, Mayor. That is inclusive of all expenses and does include capital, and capital can move the bar up and down pretty quick. Agreed. So this is another perspective on the general fund. This is the difference between the amended budget, which we just approved, and the proposed that we have right here in front of you today. Total budget's up 3.8 million, a little over 8% for the general fund. Personnel's up 9%, operating 5%, capital is down a little bit, or not a little bit, down 61%. And then transfers and carry forward are represented there. Again, we're looking at the operating and personnel on that graph. Those are the items that are ongoing. Those are the items we need to make sure we can satisfy the bills on. And those are the two items that we really keep an eye on, and you can see the budget as it's represented there. Another way of looking at this, these are the budget requests that were presented to you during the July workshops. We had a number of enhancement and replacement requests. This is just a summary of the information that we've all discussed and reviewed. For the community development and administration divisions, they requested a little over $577,000 in enhancements and replacements with some items listed below as the major items pulled from our work. Parks and recreation, a little over 2.2 million. Again, these items hopefully look somewhat familiar and you're comfortable with still. The police department requested 1.9 million in requests for enhancements and replacements. And then the fire department requested a little over $620,000 in enhancements and replacements. General fund revenue, these are the major revenue sources that we are utilizing for fiscal year 2017's budget. You'll notice that there is a difference between the revenue and the expenses, and that's because we've approved to use carry forward fund balance dollars to balance the budget. Our major revenue source, as you can see, is predominantly property taxes, 65%, followed by development services, that's your building permit revenue. Then that's followed by their intergovernmental, that's a combination of shared sales tax, liquor tax, you know, from the state. So those are major property, major revenue sources that we're utilizing for the general fund for fiscal year 2017. Capital improvement fund as proposed, $422,141. That entire amount is comprised of carry forward dollars. We had no fiscal year 2017 items presented to you, so that represents all items approved in previous fiscal years. That moves us to our third reporting fund, which is the enterprise fund. Enterprise fund is requesting $66,732,653. And this, this fund has approved, or as we reviewed and proposed, a little over 17 million of fund balance to balance the budget. Again, noting the major percentages, we have capital at 46%. That's the majority of their, or the major portion of their budget, with personnel at 13%, operating 11, and then carry forward makes the difference. As proposed in the $66 million this year, wastewater is going to request 65% of the budget. As the mayor stated earlier, capital does have a major factor in the way the percentages are distributed year by year by year. This particular year, they have the lion's share of the budget. But again, every year's a little bit different. In the same way, we looked at the general fund, we compare the general fund, or we're comparing the enterprise fund fiscal year 17 proposed budget to the amended budget that you just proposed or approved. Again, the major factor here is capital and capital carry forward. And those are big variances and year over year. They can swing left and right, up and down, as the mayor stated. This particular year, as we proposed to you during the budget discussions, we have a growing community, and we have a lot of needs, and the enterprise fund's going to work on satisfying those needs. Then enterprise fund budget requests, wastewater requested 25 million. That's that large capital influx that we saw that looks, makes the enterprise fund's wastewater division use 65% of the funds. But again, as we presented to you, we're managing the growing community, and these are the needs that we need. Wastewater had requests of 6.3 million. Engineering utility billing had a little over $126,000. And those are all the requests of enhancements and replacements that we proposed to during the budget workshops in July. These are the revenue sources that we're utilizing for the enterprise fund with water and sewer sales as their primary revenue sources as listed on this graph. And they have a number of other revenue sources, but you can see the 71% of the revenue comes from the sales. With that, that is a summary of the fiscal year 2017 budget as we've proposed from our July workshops. And at this time, we stand for any questions on the data that has been presented to you and stand for any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Counsel, any questions?
With that, just like the fiscal year 2016 amended budget, we follow the same process with the public hearing, and I hand this to you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to provide testimony on this, this topic? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Kelly Ferrellis, the executive director of Valley Regional Transit. Our address is 700 Northeast 2nd Street, Suite 100 in downtown Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to say that I absolutely support your budget, the, and the support within that budget for public transportation in our region. We're very excited about the opportunity to continue to serve older adults and people with disabilities in the community and enhance that service by launching the lifestyle service that you've approved the startup funds for in this year's budget. And other than, than that, I just wanted to let you know that we absolutely support the, the request as stated in your budget.
Thank you, Kelly. And I just want to take a minute. Working with Todd has been awesome. We've appreciated the thoughtful approach that you've employed in really getting a better understanding of what those needs are in our community with both our senior population as well as our disabled population, those that can't drive. And the, the participation was very thoughtful and inclusive. And I am excited to see Harvest Transit roll forward in October to provide transportation to those that need it most.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have really appreciated working with Todd as well. He's, brings a lot of energy to the work he does and cares a lot about the people that he's planning services for. He did want me to provide an update in terms of the timing. There's been a little bit of delay in getting the vehicles, so it looks like it's going to be December for the startup, but we want to make sure we have the right equipment and it can deliver the best service. So we'll keep you informed of any changes in the schedule, but we're still moving forward with the training, and, and we're really excited about, about Harvest and, and the project going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Kelly. Any other testimony? You know, I would say to our call, our high school students, maybe you get extra credit if you ask a question. Our boy scout. Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Question for either you, Madam Mayor, or Todd. In light of a, of another year with our budget public hearings and another year of very little public testimony, I was hoping maybe you could summarize for counsel what type of outreach we did about our published budget. I'm just interested to know what we did to inform the public about this, maybe find opportunities for improvement for next year so we can get more public to come out and testify.
I'll tell you what I'm familiar with, but I'm not the communications person, so we have published public notices. We've put it out on our, our social media outlets. We have livestreamed all of the budget workshops as well as the hearings from city council. We've had press coverage from both Valley Times and the Meridian Press, and we really appreciate that continued coverage. I, I don't know what all else. This, this outcome, actually, we actually have people in our audience this year, which we usually only have Ralph. And so we've even held town hall meetings that around the budget with questions about anything and everything but the budget at. So I don't know how to find better involvement. I, I'm hoping that they elect you to ask questions and to, to be involved. I, I thought it was important on the public record to talk about our staff. And they start our budget preparations in February, probably after the audit is final, and then they roll right into budget presentations. Are presenting the calendar, starting to gather information, writing the revenue manuals so we have a better idea of what we're balancing our budget to. Thanks to all of our council liaisons for participating in the initial budget discussions, going line item by line item through the various department budgets. Then participating in your department's discussions on the enhancements. And it's, it's a very robust process. We have two workshops that does give the public those background conversations and information, just like you. We hope that they have time to digest, to develop any concerns and comments, and get it to the elected officials because of the extended workshop schedule that we, we have employed. And I think that that has worked well. So any suggestions on how we can do a better job at letting our public know are always welcome because we too would love to see engagement and appreciate the engagement we do have.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I believe, um, well, showing the four-hundred percent improvement in our audience tonight, maybe, maybe more, but don't, don't quote me on that math. I wasn't really, it depends on, it depends on how you calculate that rate. I think that, that the outreach has been tremendous this year. I personally have felt, I've been inundated with, and not as a councilperson, but it's on my Nextdoor, it's on my Facebook, it's on, I get an email, I get the city email. So I have seen it everywhere I turn as, as, uh, coming to me as a citizen, not as a council member, so I, I think that what needed to be done was done, and, um, I think maybe the fact that there's not anybody here that wants to testify just shows that they're satisfied with the budget that we've come up with.
I appreciate you noting the Nextdoor. That was part of the social media I mentioned, but this is the first year we've used, uh, Nextdoor, uh, to push that information out as well, so.
I'll give you a lesson.
Oh, my gosh. We're going to teach Mr. Byrd what Nextdoor is. Hopefully, you are all registered.
It's your neighbor?
It's your neighbor.
It's Nextdoor dot com, and I'll help you sign up.
No.
It's like Facebook, but only your neighbors.
Yeah, thank you.
Just, just to sense the question that was asked, Nextdoor is a neighbor-to-neighbor, um, social media platform, and it is a neighbor-to-neighbor, um, tool. So you go in and sign up under your address, and you get connected to those in your subdivision, and it's, it's been a valuable, um, public safety tool, uh, that lets neighbors talk about what crime is happening in. Our crime prevention specialist is able to push information out, and the city pushes a lot of information out about, um, public safety, about road, possible road issues. Um, we had a water main break that we use, uh, Nextdoor to let them know about, uh, road closures. We've, um, used it to let people know about events and, um, uh, special type of, of announcements, and so we can push it out, but we can't see the conversations that ensue after that, so it, it has been a valuable tool. We've, we've heard from our neighborhood associations and that it has been a, a real valuable tool. That was my summary. Any, any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
Hearing or seeing none, I move we close the public hearing on FY seventeen proposed budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing on item seven, oh, I'm sorry, four B. I added a couple numbers in there. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I move we approve FY seventeen budget in the amount of one-hundred-and-nineteen million, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, uh, and have the proper ordinance drawn up to be brought back to be passed.
I have a motion and a second to approve, uh, item four B, the, um, FY two thousand and seventeen budget. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Councilmember Byrd.
Aye.
The motion passes. Um, again, I would like to thank our Finance Department and all of our departments. Uh, as you saw with some of the revenues that were turned back as a budget amendment, uh, we appreciate your fiduciary responsibility, um, to the citizens of our city. Uh, we know that you look for every opportunity to find efficiencies and savings in the projects that you do. We appreciate all the thoughtful, um, deliberation that has gone into evaluating each of your lines, item by item, and, um, seeing justifying when you want an increase and talking about of the variances when, uh, you did not spend what you were authorized to spend. It's been great dialogue, and we know that a lot of work and thought goes into it, so our thanks go to each and every one of you for everything you've done to set us up for another great year. Okay, counsel, anything further? Um, future meeting topics, we do have a town hall meeting tomorrow at Hillsdale Elementary School in South Meridian that starts at six-thirty, and hope to see you all there. We have, uh, coffee with the mayor next week, and so just all kinds of, um, opportunities to, to get involved, and don't forget Art Walk. And for all of you, you are always welcome to donate a piece of art and hide it in our downtown. We have tags that you can take your, your artistic talents, and, um, if you want us to hide it for you, we're more than welcome.
Awesome.
To, to drop it off, and we can do that, and I would encourage you to walk around Meridian, and maybe you might find a little gem that you can keep for yourself as well. So, thank you for, again, counsel, your diligence in being part of the budget preparations, and for your thoughtful deliberation during the workshop and, and fine-tuning what was approved tonight. So if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. I can't, I even ordered.